I will call to order the December first Maple Plain Plan and Commission meeting. And we'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seems like you have to have an amen after that. Yeah, I know. All right, next item is to adopt the agenda. So we have the changes, if they're not proposed for the agenda. Hearing silence, I will accept any kind of motion for adopting that agenda.
I'm not going to put, I'm making a motion to adopt the agenda.
I will second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the minutes from last month, November, November 3rd meeting. Any comments, changes, additions?
Well, good to me, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Moving right along, good job, Grant. Then, next would be our public hearing for, to discuss the signed ordinance.
I'm sorry, Chair, could we request a motion to adopt those?
Yeah.
To approve those? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I missed that.
Thank you.
I motion to approve the minutes for the November 3rd, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we can start our public hearing for the discussion of the signed ordinance.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. So tonight's discussion revolves around a potential tax amendment still to the zoning ordinance relating to our, the sign provisions that are within that ordinance. So, Chapter 150, Section 15025, which is our, our sign ordinance pertaining specifically to kind of mixed use zoning districts. We've had several meetings and several discussions relating to this. We've actually talked about this over the course, I think, of six or seven years now. We've at different times had conversations about our sign ordinance, most specifically relating to internally illuminated signs. In those discussions, Planning Commission has, I think, for the, the majority of Planning Commissioners consistently come back to a recommendation, which is to maintain or sustain our current sign ordinance relating to internally illuminated signage and to maintain the, then kind of subsequent design guidelines, which go along with that and then kind of support that. So, following direction that was provided by the Planning Commission after our last discussion on this topic, we brought this back to the City Council at a workshop and just talked through the recommendation that Planning Commission had made and then asked Council how they wanted to proceed. And there was some discussion at that meeting around it. There is a majority of Council members that would like the ordinance to accommodate internal illumination. And so, given that, the discussion was, can we go back to Planning Commission and talk about our ordinance again? And/or is there another mechanism which the Planning Commission would be comfortable with to, you know, possibly look at or allow for some sort of internal illumination? I mean, we talked about that, we've done this a couple of times and that, you know, there's, there's a pretty strong consensus by planning on the topic. But one of the things that I talked about was this idea of kind of establishment of a separate subcommittee that would be a sign review committee. It might be a vehicle or might be a mechanism that the city could implement that would at least put us in a position to review the ordinance at a different, kind of like microscopic level or more of a detailed level to see if, not only through that committee's recommendation, but through some meeting with that, they, they could come up with a standard that might be something we could then move to put into place. When we had talked about standards previously in the ordinance, I had provide a bunch of draft ordinances from other communities that kind of looked at, how do you, how would you, or what are the kind of criteria that you would think about or utilize if you were going to look at internal illumination? And we talked about kind of the brightness, the intensity, hours of operation, dimming capabilities, things like that, are all kind of strategies that, that communities use. We went a little bit further in our discussion. We talked about, you know, things like, got, got, we got more into the kind of design discussion and noted that standards in and of themselves don't necessarily generate good, good design. And so, you know, we talked about if there were some other provisions and factors that would be considered for internal illumination, it, it, it needs to address or, or give some kind of flexibility to being able to, to look at a sign kind of holistically, not only just the internal illumination piece, but the font, the text, the size, the color, right? All of those aspects kind of all go together and then maybe you'd have a sign that meets the intent of the downtown design guidelines or, you know, if the intent is, is tweaked. So, from staff level, we wanted to bring this back to Planning Commission based on direction provided by Council to just have this discussion. Is there another mechanism that we could move or consider? There's a couple of other pieces that I want to just point out to Planning Commission. You all know this, but, I mean, your recommendation is your recommendation, so whatever that is, is, is what, you know, we bring back. Council does obviously have the ability to draft and adopt whatever ordinance they would see fit, but obviously they, they like your input and your ability to help guide and, and kind of direct that. But, you know, at some level, if the Council would like to do that, they, they have that ability. I don't want to speak for Council, but if you want to add in anything, feel free. But this other kind of idea that I brought forward, it is something that I, it's a tool I've used myself in other cities. I've used it a little bit differently, but we've put together, I, I put together these, these committees, which are kind of an informal but formalized review because Council appoints it, or doesn't appoint it, but they, they can create it, I guess, which, and then they give it some statutory authority to basically review from a design standpoint and vet a problem, right? And so, where we've used this before is in similar situations, but different, where you've got to look more holistically at a bunch of criterias and factor to make a decision on whether or not it's okay or reasonable or a decent use versus trying to write a really kind of more rigid ordinance, which then when you go to apply it, you're kind of stuck applying whatever those factors are and it takes away some of the subjectivity. Now, some people want more subjectivity, some people want more objectivity, but we've talked quite a bit about signage and it, there is somewhat, somewhat of the design is in the eye of the beholder and somewhat design is, there are just a ton of factors that can make up a good or bad sign. So, you know, we have signs now that are 100% compliant that we all would agree are really bad signs. They're, they're, they're of poor taste, they don't really bring out the design guidelines or, or coincide with the design guidelines. And then we probably have other signs that we've denied that were much better aesthetically and, and maybe fit those guidelines better. So, trying to, trying to kind of one size all or write those criteria proves difficult. And then what we know, because I've been doing this for a long time, when we write standards, as soon as somebody figures out how to meet the standard, everybody just copies it, right? So then you just get, well, this company knows how to meet it, this is the lettering, this is the light, this is the font, and then we'll just get that. No, it's not all bad, sometimes having one thing that's good is good, but, but it is, it is something that proves difficult when you're talking about kind of this aesthetic problem that you're trying to solve, so how do you write that standard? So, I threw out some just ideas. I wanted to have this discussion again to see where Planning Commission is and just kind of get, you know, have a little bit more discussion and then talk some more direction. If you look at kind of some draft language that I put, I really, I really drafted this not to be final, but to be for discussion, just so we had something. What I, what I went back and looked at is there's kind of two, two places in the ordinance where we could maybe address signage. One of the things that you'll note and that I'm focusing on, I'm really just like hyper-focused on the mixed use really, that district, right? But that district's so broad in our city that it really covers, you know, three quarters of the city that's visible. We do have a commercial, industrial zoning district that includes the area south of the railroad tracks, east of 19, and the area going west on Highway 12, west of Hallgren, north and south, and then the, the business park south on Hallgren and Pioneer Creek. Those areas do not have a stipulation against internally illuminated sign. So, you know, we do have like Tri-K put up a, a reader board, Proto Labs had a sign up, Day Distribute, I think's internal, was when it was out there maybe, but.
Wink.
Wink, yeah, Wink has one. So, I mean, we do have a handful, what's the new business?
Revolve.
No, oh yeah, Revolve is the.
On the corner.
Is the plastic mold, right? Yeah. What's the auto body? Aren't they revolve, evolve? The one down by the schoolhouse?
Rebel.
Rebel, I keep getting those names. But anyway, they are going for a internally illuminated sign. So, and they're, you know, right there at Hallgren, but they're in the, in the right zoning district, so. I, I bring that up just for context. When I look at the, you know, the ordinance, there's, I said there's two places. One is specifically, we have a category called mixed use and office districts and in that we could accept out internally illuminated signs if approved by the sign review committee. So we could create the committee, allow the committee to then review the signs based on certain criteria, and then if found to be meeting the, the criteria and meeting the intent of the design guidelines could be approved. I suggest that that committee could also then make recommendations to amend the ordinance based on kind of a more, a more focused review and consideration for sign design, basically. And then we do also have another, at the end of our chapter, it's not in the, in the language I gave you, but it's in the ordinance, at the end of our sign chapter, we do have this sign package provision. And I looked at, could we amend that sign package provision to include this kind of a, you know, sign review? But it, it starts to get complicated because that's an optional review right now. It's, it's one that is either directed by staff or directed by Council or asked for by the petitioner, and it's not a mandatory, and we've run into that before. I think we've, recently we utilized it for the smoke shop. We said, you've got to bring, bring in a sign package to look at because we're not, it's not okay, we're not willing to, to approve it as is. But I think for discussion purposes, this kind of gives you the crux of what I was looking at, you know, City Council may establish for the purpose of reviewing signs that are internally illuminated. So, if you came in with a, with a sign that was external gooseneck, halo lit, which is, meets our requirements or anything else, you could continue to just apply for that and it would be a staff review typically that would be able to review and approve. If you want internal illumination, it would kick in, then this provision of the ordinance, and it says that the sign committee could permit sign to be internally illuminated if the sign complies with all of the following criteria. So I talk that only those signs set forth in 15025B may be internally, meaning it would have to be a compliant sign in all other aspects of the ordinance. It would have to be size, it would have to be, you know, whatever it is, building or wall or monument, whatever those standards are, it'd have to comply. When located within 100, oh no, I'm sorry, a proposed sign must conform, yeah, with all other standards. So A and B are, there's kind of two pieces where it conforms. Then C, when located within 150 feet of a residential, parts of the sign that is internally illuminated must be ordinate, oriented so that it's not visible from the principal structure. And then I talk about dimming, that was one of the provisions we had talked about before, so that the light, if it's within 150 feet of a residential, has to be dimmed and it can't be visible. And then portions of signs which do not include logo message shall be wholly opaque. So, you really would only be able to illuminate lettering, not any other portion of the sign.
In that situation, when you say wholly opaque, you mean not internally lit?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, it has to be, it has to be dark, right? So, it, it gets rid, and we already have a provision against kind of channel, sandwich board type or the plastic kind of signs, but this, this would suggest that if it's not specifically, and this is just a criteria that I was talking about for conversation, but, you know, we've talked about, you know, there are signs out there that if you, if you internally illuminate just the lettering of the sign or just the logo and that's it, everything else around the letters, everything is opaque, I mean, there is some, you know, sometimes those can be a lot better. I, I mean, typically, I, I think they're better signage.
That must be what the ones on the John Quinlaven Building are like because they look like they're cut out.
Correct.
It's because of all the black around it.
Right. And that was, and you, I mean, you, Mardell and Steph and you were on there when we did those, I mean, we had conversations on those, we kind of did get into the weeds a little bit on some of those signs because we started talking about font, we started talking about individual channel or lettering only, right? I mean, we did, we did modify a couple of those early signs and then the other ones followed suit. So they, they kind of just took, if you look, they all kind of now look the same because the first couple we did, the next couple came in and said, well, if I do that, can I get the variants, you know? I mean, that was, that was the commerce. So their design, their sign people designed kind of that last one. What, what was the last one? Is it the insurance? The variant, I think, variant insurance or whatever that is? That one was designed to mimic the wealth management and whatever else, so.
They did a good job, I think, on those based on the situation. That was, building was established, what, 15 years ago?
Yeah, at least.
And so we had a sort of a can of worms that we had to clean up, right?
Yeah.
And that's how that one became what it, and they did it, you know, ended up being a nice, nice deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that one, it was, the first one was prior to the design guidelines.
It was.
If I'm not mistaken, so the others were, you know, precedent was set. In your proposal here, are you, are you proposing that this committee would only look at proposals that include internally lit signs, with sort of the internally lit sign design review committee only, or is it for all signs?
I'm suggesting that because that's the issue I was, you know, I, I mean, I just put that as conversation. The question would be, would you just have them look at, you know, all signs?
Yeah.
To, to say that they're compliant with the design guidelines or, yeah, I mean, I think we could, we could do that.
You know, correct me if I'm wrong, fellow Commissioners, but I thought that was kind of the discussion was more to look at all signs, not just if we were considering internally lit signs.
I recall we had a discussion about creating the sign review committee to kind of streamline the application process so that would be more efficient for businesses and a lower cost. Because I think that was also part of it.
Lower cost.
The cost to do the formal process was way more expensive than this process was, and so that's where we kind of came up with this, with the recommendation of Mark as well, to create a, or potentially suggest creating a sign review committee, so.
Because aesthetics is, is a difficult thing to legislate.
Mm-hmm.
As you noted, Mark.
Yeah.
And I think it's, it would be too restrictive to try to legislate really the, you know, nitty gritty details of, of design. But a design review committee could look at all signs more holistically and in terms of quality. You mentioned some of the signs that are compliant, maybe aren't the best looking signs out there, right? So a design review committee could be looking at that, you know, as part of the, part of their role, not just potentially internally lit signs, but looking at aesthetics as well. Seems to me though that still the first question for us is how we feel about internally lit signs, period.
Yeah.
So before we go too far down the road of, you know, looking at a designer review committee that looks, that looks at internally lit signs, I think we should have some discussion about revisiting internally lit signs. And I, I wanted to point out, correct me if I'm wrong, Marissa and Mark, about the design review or about the design guidelines, because I reread them, you know, set up in three different sections for the different mixed use areas, the Bud, Highway 12, Downtown and Gateway. And in Downtown, they explicitly say that internally lit signs are, are not permitted.
Correct.
For the Gateway and for Bud, Highway 12, they say they are, they are to be avoided. So it's not prohibitive, but it's to be avoided.
It is the language. So when I started, I, I asked that question kind of historically, what had been done, and there had been a lot, but the interpretation that was made was to be avoided is to not put in.
Correct.
So, I, I mean, we could revisit that language in the design guidelines if you wanted to say it's to be avoided means there are exceptions to that, but you're right, that is the language in the ordinance. Or it's not the ordinance, it's the guideline, which is in ordinance, right?
Yes.
And I, I'd have to just double check in the mixed use again, I'll look too while we're talking about it, but is the language, is there duplicative language in that on the internal illumination? I thought there was. I'll double check.
In what year?
In the ordinance itself, in the MU District provisions.
Yeah, I, I didn't double check that.
Yeah, and the variances we grant are all downtown. You know, Iron Exchange came in with their own sign, they didn't have to get a variance or anything, and they were okay with what they didn't want internally illuminated. So then really it would be, you know, Liquor Depot, we had a long discussion on their signage, and they ended up with the backlit halo lit. And then Forkless, they were different, they didn't want internal illumination, they painted the building and we made them change that because we don't allow paint on the, directly onto a building, but they always had the gooseneck signage. So really now when we're talking about, you know, the, the kind of current piece, we're, we're back in the downtown, which is prohibited, right?
Right.
It's actually specifically prohibited. Cassia was the other one, they didn't want internally illuminated, they did a external.
Oh, in the Gateway?
In the Gateway. So we haven't tested that really hard, right?
Right.
Because all the signs we've been looking at for variances are downtown with the exception of Liquor Depot, but that wasn't a variance, that was, they, they just said, we'll do the halo.
Well, that's where a design review committee could be handy, I guess, in reviewing, if someone did want to come in with internally lit in those two areas that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the one that we haven't had a challenge on, or nobody's come in on it, but the, I mean, the shopping center, right, the old MPFC building, is that kind of multi-tenant building and there are, there is neon on that, right? I mean, there's, the liquor store has is go to kind of strip mall, Kmart neon as you can get.
Right, infuля or pink.
It's kind of the epitome of it.
Yeah, well, that was, that predated.
Right.
This, but.
Right.
Well, if MPFC was still there, it would be the same.
It was, it was internally illuminated.
Yeah, they were internally.
Hundred percent.
Forever. The pharmacy.
Well, I'd like to, I got my copy of the design guidelines, especially for those newer members, I don't know if you had a chance to really review this much at all, but I just kind of wanted to see a few sentences here about, you know, kind of the purpose of them and so forth for context purposes. "It was intended to be an easy to use, informative guide for the architectural and design characteristics of Maple Plain. These design guidelines are not meant to be prescriptive, that inhibits creativity or the process of good design and problem solving by developers and builders. The community has prepared these design, these guidelines to help developers and builders understand what the city wants for architectural aesthetics and design quality in the city's defined districts that include Gateway, Downtown and Bud, Highway 12. These design guidelines should be referenced for all projects regardless of what the project lies within one of the specific prescribed districts. But the purpose was to help achieve and implement the vision for the community. The city embraces, embraces the unique small town special quality of the community and realizes the need to preserve these qualities for the enjoyment of residence and future generations." So, the design guidelines were, you know, developed as a result of the Minnesota design team work that was done in, you know, '06 or '07 approximately. And there was a lot of engagement, hundreds of people showed up right next door in the gym over here and we had quite a party and a lot of input, and these, this was the result of that. So, I mean, it's, it's important to, excuse me, to me anyway, to, you know, to, you know, not take those lightly. You know, a lot went into it, a lot of public input and, and I think it's very important that we, you know, uphold the design guidelines for, you know, for future development here. That said, how, you know, is there an opportunity to consider internally lit that would be in keeping with the design guidelines? That's a good question. I'd like to get your input on that.
Let me echo a little bit of that, and I, I agree. I mean, we're here to solve problems, not create problems. You know, we're a, we're kind of a citizen commission, right? Not elected. Our job is to review the issues, review the codes, match it up, and if somebody's asking for a variance or they're asking for whatever, any kind of change, it's our responsibility to stick to those codes, right? And make those recommendations based on them, which is what we did twice, I think. And did a good job at it. I think where we're at right now is, is understanding that, you know, first of all, those guidelines, 15 years old, that's not that long ago when it comes to development. It really isn't, I mean, it's a heartbeat. You look at, as Stephen had suggested, the hundreds of people. Part of my issue a little bit with this, and I'm wanting to find a ground that we can move forward, right? So that's the spirit of this. But part of my issue is, is that there was a lot of very, very good work that was done, and so I want to be very careful in how I kick that to the side. And part of it feels a little bit like that today with this. But I think the discussion on how we create, and it's a little bit of a slippery slope, creating a committee based on what color is yellow, or what is a good sign, what is a bad sign? How does that work? The code as it reads right now basically has it kind of cut and dried. Certain kind works, certain kind doesn't, that makes it easier. But it's still created challenges that we've had to discuss and had to, had to work through those things, right? So nothing's perfect. But I would challenge us, if we're going to come up with a, some design criteria that we need to be kind of careful and whoever's going to be on that committee, bless them heartily for the challenge that's ahead of them because it's a can of worms, it just is. I've seen it in other communities, I've had to deal with it in other communities as a developer and as a business person, and sometimes that can be more hectic. So I think it's on our responsibility. Again, we're not. Again, we're not voted into this, our job is to respect the codes and make our recommendations on the codes and the rules. And now we're going to modify that a little bit, so.
They are design guidelines, not the code.
The code does incorporate the guidelines.
Sort of, references. When I look at them from our design guideline, the map of the downtown area, Annie is outside of that.
Well, I'm looking at your sheet right now, it doesn't name streets or anything like that.
That's diagrammatic.
You can't say one or another. I, yeah, I could say that she is included in that.
Do you have a copy of the official?
If you wanted footage, no.
Yeah.
Right, there's no...
I can pull them out.
It's not necessarily to scale. But she, I mean, right next to her is a great pylon, I'm using beef sign. She's got the city of Maple Plain going all the time with a new message with color.
Yeah, I think, Martel, I think with all due respect, I think it's important that we don't make this an Annie issue. I think that if we're going to look at the codes and we're going to look at a better way of moving forward with the signs, it's no longer about an individual, it's about what can we create...
But you're still looking at the John Quinleben building.
No, I'm not.
That will come up again.
Martel, I'm not looking at the John Quinleben, I'm saying that we need to put those things aside and let's look at the code. And let's see how we can make it more accessible, more functional, in a careful way.
And bring it more up to date. Things have changed.
The one thing that has not changed, Martel, is the technology within a internally lit sign. It is no different fifteen years ago than it is today.
That's true.
It has not changed.
It has, there's, and so when we speak, let's make sure we understand, but it has nothing, there is no difference.
You'll even see pictures of them in the guidelines. Not meant to be for signs, but those other architectural features they were trying to show. But you'll see internally lit, so internally lit signs have been around for a long time.
Well, I believe that.
So how do we go forward with what your question was? I didn't mean to get us off track.
Should we legislate all of downtown a certain way because the fire station has electronic sign?
The fire station does not, the city of Maple Plain has.
Maple Plain has, yeah.
And the fire station does have a pylon. So does the beef council. So does the gas station or car lot.
I think what we're talking about here is, you know, vision for the future. There was plenty of signs that were here prior to the design guidelines. And we're not, no one's proposing to tear those down or asking them to change. We're talking about new projects going forward in the future. And the design guidelines were designed to create a vision for the future. And if we, the question for us is, do we want to adhere to that? Or do we want to toss them to the side? Because there's other precedents that have happened that are contrary to them.
I don't think we're suggesting to throw them all aside. I think we're talking about tweaking it.
How would you propose that? What are your suggestions?
I think what Mark has written is very good. What Annie's, what Annie has proposed now fit under that? I like the idea of the black around it with all, I mean, I think the signs on the John Quinleben building are great. And do we want our whole town black with no lit signs so that nobody knows they're driving through town? And is that why they speed because they don't know they're going through a town?
There aren't lights on all of the sides, they're just not internally lit. They're backlit, they're halo lit, they're...
They're not, down in the gateway? There's four lit, five. Most of them are not lit, so it's black at night. The whole town is dark at night. You don't know you're entering a town. It's dark.
But is that because of Highway 12 lighting? Or, you know, because Highway 12 isn't necessarily ours. I imagine it's owned by the state. And so if we wanted to put lighting along Highway 12, we would need state approval. Because that's what I see, is that we have Highway 12 cutting through our town. Most of it is not relatively lit, but I feel like that's because it's the state of Minnesota's responsibility. Or at least we would have to go through them to get lighting along the sides of Highway 12.
Like more street lighting?
More street lighting, yeah. Because, yeah, I mean, that's one thing I noticed even coming from, when I, when I come under the pass of County Road 6. You get one light for the on-off ramp. And then it's basically dark until the Medina, the Holiday Gas Station. And then you're greeted with the Holiday Gas Station sign, which is Medina. So we can't say anything about that. And then after that, it's, I mean, I don't know what sort of lighting's along Highway 12 between Baker Park, that intersection, and Bud.
It's only on one side of the street, for one thing.
And if you're focusing on the signs that are on those buildings, well, of course, it's going to be dark because the buildings are further back from Highway 12.
But they are lit.
They are, they are lit, yeah.
But not many of them.
Right. There are some, like, yeah, Forkless, I don't, because that's just a sign. I don't think they have...
They have a light, but they must choose to turn it off.
After, yeah, which makes sense.
They're, Forkless, Forkless has goosenecks.
It does.
And they have two signs, they have, they put them on both corners, which you're allowed to do on that building. But they gooseneck though. Forkless is actually not a terrible sign.
After hours, though, do they turn them on?
Well, I mean, I don't know what time they turn them off, but they're on, like, right now they're on.
Yeah, so...
But I guess the point I'm trying to say is, if you're asking the signs to light up the city, you need a lot more light from those signs. Or you need street lighting along Highway 12. And that's something that might have to be worked with the state on, so. Because, yeah, it's darker, but that's not to say that signs aren't lit. That's just the nature of...
Businesses will want to have their signs lit or lit.
Yep.
But if you count it total, there aren't many with lit signs.
But that's not why the city's dark, in my opinion. I think there are other reasons why the city might be dark. And part of that is, street lighting along Highway 12 is rather obsolete.
Do we even have the Christmas lights up yet?
Oh, yeah. And those, that's what I was just saying, those look good. You know, I mean, you've got those going down Highway 12, at least for a portion of it.
I think one, a comment I want to make is that it sounds like the council is already going to change the ordinance, right? And so I think our focus needs to be on now looking at that and coming up with a working system, a working process to make that happen. Whether they're installing Christmas lights or not isn't a contribution to that conversation.
Yeah.
I think that if there's some ideas, we got fresh, a freshie right here who hasn't been beaten down on this subject.
Well, definitely one question that I had was the subject business. So internally illuminated sign, is that just a square box with plastic over it? I mean, or, there's no real, I haven't looked at the definition of internally illuminated yet.
That's one example.
Yeah.
Our code actually already disallows that, so.
Yeah, so we don't allow the, we don't allow the box, it's just, no, we have one, Spikes has one.
Spikes has one.
But we, that was a variance and it was historic and we allowed them. Our ordinance does allow you to take an existing sign that was compliant at the time of adoption of our ordinance and swap out the face plate.
Yep.
That's what Spikes continued to do, so, and then they, they came back a couple of years, or two years ago for kind of a confirmation that they can do it again. Because it was done twi, it's been done twice on that sign. So the beef council also did the same thing. That sign wasn't existing, they were able to swap the plate. So, the shopping center, the MPFC has a pylon with a, they had a box lit sign like that, too. They would have been allowed to swap that out, but they've now passed the time and that sign's no longer conforming. So that sign's useless.
And then the Jake Gordon building, those signs are compliant?
None of the signs are compliant anymore, they're all granted under variance, so they're through variance compliant.
So what is a sign in town that is compliant?
Iron Exchange, Liquor Depot, Cassia's Monument sign, Forkless.
Collision corner, Blackwater.
Collision corner.
The Haven Homes.
McGarry's.
Liquor Depot is behind, actually behind the letters.
That's what they, they call it a backlit or a halo. Meaning that the individual letters are, there's no light source inside the letter. The light source shines off the back of the letter and glows around it.
And I remember saying that I hated that sign for many, many, many years because...
It was out.
It was out. And I came...
Now, though, it's all good.
I know, it's all good, and I'm out there in my good book now. But for many years, they were not in my good book. And we kept putting it out, saying, fix those, fix those, fix those, fix those. If you read the minutes from many years ago, you will see Barb Rose said, fix those darn lights.
You did.
And...
It was out for about five years.
Yeah. And, and just, I think I'm talking too loud. I put it towards me, so I wouldn't, okay. Anyway, I'm very wishy-washy about this, and I hate being wishy-washy. But I was around for the design guidelines, and I'm very proud to be part of that. And some things, fifteen years later, I feel that things could be updated a little bit. But I don't want the whole program that we worked so many years ago to go away. This is where I'm getting wishy-washy and I hate it. I think there's always room for improvement. Mark, when you were talking about a committee, who's going to be on this committee? And another thing that I was reading, I don't, some of you didn't get this, but I asked for some specific additional notes, and thank you, Grant. On the council, the vote was three-two, okay? Yes, that, they got one more person to say yay. But that isn't a whole lot of big a difference to me when you get down to the fine tactics. And you're right, whatever we put forward, the council might say, you guys are a bunch of blonies. We're not going to take anything that you do, and we're just going to do our own thing. Now, we do want to give the council some good input so they can have some direction, how we feel. But again, I'm back to being wishy-washy. And that's, and I know I hate it. I wish I could just say, I'm all this way and that's it, but it isn't like that.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? Mark, how do we, with the committee concept, how do you avoid the arbitrary and subjective issue?
So one, it's done outside of the context of a statutorily appointed board. So there's a little bit more flexibility within that. But the idea would be to establish some, some criteria that you would utilize as the basis for qualifying so that you could say, all signs meet these criteria, and we're only being subjective in this, you know, in this area. If you, if you read it, I said the sign review committee can review the criteria and recommend establishment of additional or revised criteria. It's just determined necessary. Part of what I was getting at is that that committee, maybe that committee by appointment could then spend some time just really like focused on that particular issue only. And then make a recommendation for establishment of some of that objective criteria that we'd measure against. Because you've got to have something. But the way that we've, that we've said it is, one, every sign has to be completely compliant with all other aspects. And then, two, there's some kind of residential piece to that. And then, three, this idea that all signs would only be able to, if internally limited, can only internally illuminate the message, not anything else. There might be some other ones, right? But those would be the criteria that we'd establish. But you're right, we have to have some general basis for approval, right? It can't just be, we like this sign, we don't. But we are trying to get a little bit of that, which is, we think it meets the intent of the design guidelines. And the design guidelines are actually fairly robust in what they're trying to accomplish. So you'd have to have findings out of that. Whatever your findings are, they'd have to say they meet the intent of the design criteria by X, Y, Z. So this isn't meant to be, it's not fully baked, if you will, because we're going to have to have a couple measurables that are consistently applied. And we talked about things, you know, like, what if it was all white? Only internally illuminated white signs, right? Because those tend to have a different, you know, feel or look. Or primary colors you can't use, or, you know, whatever that, or maybe it's, you know, Garamond, you know, twelve-point, that's the only font we want, or we pick three fonts. I mean, those are like real things that we could look at. And those are, you know, ways that you could, you know, sign material is another one. Is it steel, is it plastic, is it, you know, there's aluminum? Are there, you know, multiple different ways to craft signs that have different appearances associated with them? Those are all things you could start to look at. You got to spend more probably time trying to get at, okay, what's the design guideline? And to the point of who's on the committee, I mean, it's an appointed, so I would assume it would be at least one council and probably two planning. That's how I like those committees, because then you have an elected plus appointed, you're not bringing necessarily outside. And you're fortunate enough to have, like, I mean, you guys are all really good at that kind of thing and you understand this. So I think that would be it. But the council would decide, they get to say it's, you know. But really, you want it to be, you don't want to have to hold, like, you can't have three council members because you don't want to have to hold it as a public meeting because we're trying to avoid kind of some of those limitations to be flexible, to be able to react a little bit faster. And really to be a little more informal in how we apply that, but...
Mark, in your opinion, or in your experience, is there a cost difference internally illuminated versus backlit?
So ten years ago, yes, there seemed to be a premium on halo lit signs. In talking to sign companies recently, and I, you're not the only city I work for. Watertown has an internal illumination prohibition, if you, and so does Victoria. And I work for those communities, but, and they have them in the downtown, too, same thing, in their CBD or central business. But recently, in talking to sign companies, they're telling me, no. It's, if it is, it's nominal. I mean, but we're talking about, you know, like Anne's sign, my, that sign that she proposed, or maybe the one on John Quinleben's buildings, those are probably like twenty-five hundred to three thousand. And if it was internally illuminated at twenty-two hundred and halo lit at twenty-eight hun, I mean, you know, we're talking like,
Right.
For like just a regular old sign. I don't, I don't think, and we could, I mean, we could, I could get specific. I mean, we have enough sign companies that do work right here. But I think it's starting to level up, because a lot of communities did go to that halo standard. I mean, not just Minnesota, I mean, this is kind of a national thing. A lot of communities adopted a halo standard as an acceptable form of illumination. So they're starting to get better, but...
So with the current halo technology, are they allow, are able to do any kind of color?
Yes.
But we don't allow color, or do we allow?
No, we do, so, but typically those, I mean, most of the halo that I see are a white glow because they, they...
Stand out more?
The contrast stands out better. If you go like right now, if you go to look at Liquor Depot, or look at now even the Smoke Shop sign, the Smoke Shop sign during the day is probably one of the other least signs we have right now, I mean, it's terrible, but if you go look at it now, it's actually not bad, because it's all black, right? So the colors don't show, but the contrast halo does, so it's a white-black contrast, I, I actually think that Liquor Depot and the, um, the Smoke Shop signs at night are two of the nicest signs, and most legible, I mean, now that they have it turned on, it was terrible for a while, but I think you can really read those pretty well, I mean, they do pop, but.
'Cause I can see one of the issues with the subject business is American Family, right? And they do have colors that are pretty, I would say iconic for the brand.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, it would be up to the business to wanna do a halo lit light, but also accommodating for the colors that they do need, so, um...
I've seen where there's been combinations of halo lit and direct lighting, you know, as well, where, you know, the direct lighting can kinda light up the, the actual letters, the font, and then the halo might be white in the background just to, you know, so you get kind of a combination of the two, so they still maintain their corporate colors, if you will.
And we, you know, if, if you read the design guidelines, there is a lot of discussion on corporate identity stuff in there, um, but you can do corporate identity, you know, and I think, Jared, you were the one who said, talked about the American Family signs you went out and looked at, I think I went and looked after our conversation you had, but...
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I found some really good examples of, um, goose neck lit or external lit, American Family signs that, I mean, they had the corporate badge, they just weren't internal, they were external, but, but then you get the color pop, you get the blue, the red, um, and that's what our design guidelines speak, that's, I think the intent of those guidelines was that if you're gonna have corporate, it's, it's, it's the other way, it's kinda front-faced or, um, illuminated, because once you go to that halo, you really end up with lesser contrast, but to your point seven, you could do the external with the halo and kinda get the best of both, but.
I think the corporate end of that and the signs, corporations have a multitude of different designs available to them, because they can't fit into all sorts of places, right, always, so that, and I think American Family as well has a number of different options available to them that are all, would be approved by the corporate end of it, uh, to do that. Internally lit, one of them, uh, Goose Neck, I think, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I...
There's lots of different options.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I, I look at signs when I travel around the, the world, but, um, I mean, I've worked in some communities that, um, I've done entitlement work for Target, and they've told Target, your sign's gotta be white, and Target's like, uh, no, it's gotta be red, and they're like, okay, goes somewhere else, you know? So Target will comply with a sign, I've seen McDonald's, you know, they'll comply with a color if pushed, obviously, they wanna push their...
Sedona, Arizona, they're signed on there, it has to be a certain color.
Right.
Or no arches, or what, or something.
Yeah.
So, so the corporate does, I mean, we're Maple Plain, I, that's not necessarily who, who you're trying to be, but that is a, I mean, corporations deal with it all the time, um, big corporations, small corporations, so I'm sure American Fam-, well, I know, we know American Family has, um, there's a black and gold one, I don't, I mean, it's American Family, but it...
What was the one you saw?
No color.
Um, I checked out a building that was in Sprint Link Park.
Yeah.
That basically was, you know, kinda like a forkless sign, where it was, but it still had all of the branding related to American Family, it was lit by a goose neck sign. Um, in Minnetaka along Highway Seven, there's actually, um, I don't want, what kinda sign it, it's a monument, I believe, that has, and I think there, it's actually just black.
Yeah.
Um, the American Family part of it is black, and there's actually no sign on the building, you don't know until you're, unless you know the address, then you can't, then there's a window sign that shows, this is the door for American Family, so, um, where else was there? Those are the two that stand out in my mind, so.
So it's, it's possible.
Right, yeah, yeah, and yeah, I mean, I think, s-, one of the council members brought it up of, the only submission that Anne had made was related to an internally illuminated sign, if they had, they, they would be more interested in, if she submits a sign that's in compliance with the City of Maple Plain ordinances, would American Family pass that or reject it? I mean, right now, the only, um, approval she's gotten was for the design related to an internally illuminated sign.
She hasn't asked for it.
She hasn't asked for anything else, for, that was based off of the, um, council meeting from, I think it was August, so.
Yeah, and that the city, I mean, American Family did confirm to the city.
Right.
The city that, or her sign could be external.
Right.
Internal, halo, and as long as the lettering and the messaging was what it was, it would be okay.
Yeah, so, you know, the issue in front of us is not that applicant.
Right, right, yeah.
Right, it's where we wanna go forward from this.
I kinda keep boiling it down to two things to discuss and, and make recommendations on, one is internally lit or not, um, in the mixed-use areas, um, although we already know that Gateway and Bud, they are technically permitted, but not encouraged, um, and then the, the Design Review Committee, and how that might, uh, how that might affect things. I keep going back philosophically, I guess, to, you know, the intent of the design guidelines, um, the vision that, that, you know, that I see written in here is, is for the city, you know, it's more of a small-scale, small-town, uh, feel pedestrian-oriented, not granted, Highway Twelve is not necessarily pedestrian-friendly, but the look and feel of, say, a downtown Excelsior, I think, to me, is a good example, um, or for those that have been to Bayfield, Wisconsin, that's another kinda good example as well too, for, at least for the downtown area. Personally, I feel that we can be more, um, flexible, I guess, uh, outside of the downtown area, the Gateway and Bud. But I, I don't wanna see, you know, the liquor store next to, uh, Iron Exchange, great business, I, I go there, but the sign itself is, you know, pretty obnoxious, really the bright pink, I don't wanna see, you know, business after business with, you know, lights or, uh, signs like that, uh, I know they're bright, Mardell, but, um...
But they, is that called halo lit?
That's internally lit.
That's internal.
But that was, uh...
That was prior to the...
That was prior to, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I, if we say yes to internally lit signs, um, somehow it's gotta be tastefully done.
Right.
Yeah.
Is this something that, so the code is fifteen years old, that we can update and say, all businesses need to have, be up to code, even ones that are grandfathered in, in ten years, fifteen years?
That's the point of the grandfathering, and we can't force somebody, within a zoning, within the zoning rules, you can't force somebody to upgrade, uh, their facilities.
Right, but if they, if the business changes, then they have to...
Changes hands, like...
Yeah, so, so any of the businesses that change, the only exception to that is, we say that non-conforming monuments with the panels can continue to be reused as long as it's just replacement of the panel. So that's the only provision that's kinda, that carries, but if any business comes in, and this goes back to kinda the Quinlaven, once they come in, um, with a, with a new business and the old sign is taken off, the new sign has to comply.
Right, yeah.
The, the issue with the Quinlaven was this kinda consistency thing, where there was three businesses that had internal illuminated, and then a new business came and they said, well, I'd be the only one without it. Three businesses later, we were still doing the replacement, right, so.
What is the coffee shop, is that a halo?
Goose, Blackwater, Goose Neck.
Goose, yeah.
Yeah, that's a Quinlaven as well, or was.
Yeah.
Built about the same, or...
That was first, I think.
First that came in.
Yeah, Collision Corner has a great Goose Neck sign, actually, there's a pretty, like, clean and simple, it's black, Goose Neck, it actually reads pretty well at night, um, because it is so clean.
Well, they're also four feet off the highway.
Yep.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say anything.
Collision Corner, yeah.
One of the compliant aspects of that business.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
Well, I don't know. Sounds like the council is going to, uh, has their plans, um, I think that, uh, I'm just struggling with kinda where to go a little bit on it, um, but I, coming up with, I think you had mentioned a couple things, one is creating, you know, identifying a district differently, do we, would that be the cleanest long-term approach to this? Um, or are we creating a committee to talk about what color is yellow and, and those kinds of things, which I think is a challenge, but maybe can be done, um, with that?
Well, I think, your first comment, I think the Gateway and Bud areas already, according to the design guidelines, already are, do allow some exceptions, as it's written, unless you found something else?
I didn't find that, I think, you know, if that were, if that were gonna be a recommendation of Planning Commission on Interpretation, then that would be something I'd come back, I, I'd want you to make that formally, a recommendation I want the council to adopt, because I, I don't think historically that's been, at least how it was applied, and I don't know, I, I don't, I don't know, that wasn't unique to me, it was before, whoever did that, I always had heard, it's just not. And then when you read it, I think we've talked about it staff level a couple different ways, but whatever the language strongly, whatever it says strongly...
To be avoided.
To be avoided, right, so to be avoided means to not happen. So, but if the interpretation was to be avoided, almost always, but then you ride a slippery slope, because then it's back to the subjectivity, well, this sign looks okay, and then how are you gonna, once you open it, you're gonna, you're, you're done, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a slippery slope, just like the, all the variances on the Quinlaven building.
But I mean, if that was something the Planning Commission thought was appropriate, you could do that. The, the issue I'd tell you, and I know why you did that, because you were looking at possibly Big Box and some other things, right? In both the MU G Gateway and the MU B Bud Avenue, if you look at our guidelines, it kinda, there's kinda leaving that open, whereas the MU D Downtown, south of the highway, is specifically meant to be kinda this, you know, this, the old town, which is what it was, right, I mean, that's...
Main Street.
Main Street. Um, so you could, you could make that, but you're gonna have a hard time telling the person on one side they cannot, and a person on the other side they can, when they're right across the street.
Do we have, um, I don't know how much you've used, or what your idea, or what your perception of, um, just a, uh, an overlay district along Highway Twelve, so such that Highway Twelve-facing businesses have some sort of a...
Yeah.
It's their own rule.
Yeah, you could, you could for sure create an overlay district within the MU.
You're maintaining the mixed-use downtown the way it is, you're still shooting for that walkable downtown off the highway, but you're allowing those few businesses that face the highway.
You could, I mean, you could definitely look at breaking that up, I, like, I always think about, like, with that, okay, what do you do with McGarry's, they can be seen, but they can't, you know, they, they're facing, but they're not, so would you, if a new owner came in and said, I wanna put my sign up on the second story, so you could...
They're not on Highway Twelve.
No, I know, but then if they...
But you can see it from downtown, or from the highway.
Right, but would you tell them no then to internal illumination? I mean, if, if the library can do it, but they can't, would you say, and the only reason I say that is our area's just not that broad of an area, you know, it's not that, there's not that much depth to the downtown.
Even the downtown area, lots are big enough, you know, yes, it faces Highway Twelve, so would you say, well, we have Frontage on Twelve, therefore, we can have internally lit signs on Main Street as well?
Yeah. It's a good point, I don't, I don't know the answer, I, I mean, I think it's something we can tell, if that was something we wanted to look at, how do you break it down differently, but.
The other thing I found strange is, it's only one mile through town, and yet we have three different areas for zoning on the signage. I think that's breaking it down way too much. I would rather see, and looking back, I didn't see it when I was helping with it, but it's only one mile, shouldn't it be the same all the way, shouldn't there be one? Why do we have three?
Because the downtown area was designed to be more small-town, uh, you know, quaint, if you will, the Gateway had opportunities for bigger businesses.
Right now, downtown is all residential.
And, uh, and Bud was envisioned to be different as well, with potential, you know, big box, larger lots.
Different visions for different areas.
Yeah.
I agree, but you're still, it's only one mile, two minutes driving.
That's why we need, that's why we need design guidelines, Mardell, to unify the appearance of that one mile.
Most people make it through in a minute and a half.
All right, where are we going here?
So Mark, are you saying that with tonight, that a committee should be formed, or we...
Well, I'm, I'm asking the question, I, I'm trying to give you guys options or solutions, if you wanted, if you wanted to do something, you know, I mean, I work for the, the council, so they said, bring it back, and I said, yep, let's go back and have, let's see if there's some other ideas that we have that maybe would do this, or accomplish the goals that, you know, their direction gave us. I don't think we got to a point where we could have adopted, I mean, we had lots of discussion, I didn't feel like we got to a point where if I proposed some more standards, we would get to a place, right? And it comes back to your question, should we or shouldn't we even light them inside? And so then this committee would be an opportunity to say, let's, let's have a little bit more, um, subjectivity to the review of this aesthetic kinda idea, and, you know, the committee then could help create a couple more standards that they would try to apply to, you know, be that. But again, this is just one idea on how to do that, if, if there was some traction, I would say, you know, we could, we could put this language, um, in front of council, or we could tweak it and put it in front of council, we could bring it back and talk about it again, and then go back. I did notice this, just in case there is action that we wanted to take, rather than not being able to, it's easier to just do the notice, so we noticed it, but that doesn't mean we have to have an official action, so.
I think that there's, there's a lot on the table, and I think it's just kinda, you know, the grand finales, which, stuff's flying everywhere, right, trying to figure out how to get this in line, I, I don't, and I, and I think it warrants maybe some more conversation. I think I'm hearing, I guess for me, the willingness to approach, um, looking at some mods.
Some what?
Modifications to, or enhancements, maybe that's a different way to say it, makes more sense, I guess. Um, I think, and, and this isn't meant to sound sarcastic, we, but we could, we could solve this and move on with the criteria, uh, simply by granting American Family their sign, and then the subject is probably off the table. I didn't mean for that to be sarcastic.
But that's true, but would, will that stop future?
And will that, and...
Under what grounds would you, would you do that?
I wouldn't. Say, because it, you know, part of it, it doesn't meet up with any other criteria with, with the standard, with what we've got, criteria, right? There's four or five things that you gotta go down the list, is it a hardship? No, blah, 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 so it's very difficult to do it, we can make things up to make it okay, but I'm not sure that's what we're asked to do.
Right.
We're asked to adhere to this, to the code that's of record, not make it up as we go, and that's what we've done, I think.
And, and to be clear with Planning Commission, I mean, not to dwell on this sign, but the American Family did get recommended for approval by Planning Commission, subject to them verifying that American Family required the corporate identity piece.
Which we discovered they didn't.
Which they discovered they didn't, the council approved the sign, but did not approve the internal illumination, but the, they asked the applicant to give them time to have the Planning Commission re-review the ordinance, that's now back in front of City Council, will be considered next week, again, because they're asking for the variance piece of that to be considered, whereas when council initially considered, they... Whereas when council initially considered, they said, we approve all of it, you just can't plug it in. And then if the ordinance changes, you'd be able to do whatever the ordinance says you can do. But American Family, of course, doesn't want to build a sign that may never be able to be turned on. They want to know that they can either turn it on or not turn it on. So that's back in front of council, that's out of Planning Commission, yeah.
So what Annie proposed originally was around the roof and below and to the side, was that opaque?
She had goosenecks on the, on the plans.
Yeah, her site plan that we saw and approved indicated her sign with gooseneck lighting over the top on that vetch or that, whatever, that, the side of her building. But then when she came in for sign permit, she asked for a variance to internally illuminate.
An eternally lit sign for, in the variance.
There was none, yeah.
I think she had her CO before she came in for the variance.
Yeah.
Well, personally, I, I'm opposed to allowing eternally lit signs, although I am in favor of the Design Review Committee to, you know, as, to review signs as they come in. But I don't know how you can make eternally lit sign really fit the intent of the design guidelines. I just don't, unless there's some other technology I'm not aware of, I just don't know how that would, how that would look, how, you know. So that's where I stand. I guess I'd be curious to know where the rest of you stand, or if there's further discussion.
Well, I will say, I like the John Quinlevon Building signs the best of all, out of every sign that I looked at in town. And they are the ones that you don't like. Is that correct?
I guess it's more of a, I mean, the signs are, for eternally lit signs, they're fine, I guess. But I, I would not want to see eternally lit signs in the downtown area, period. I don't see how it fits the, the design guidelines.
I think one other thing, Mardell, that we're trying to avoid is what we like or don't like, right? There's an established code there, and there's a vision that was established. And I think that's, speaking of steam, but I mean, that's what I'm sort of sticking to, so it's not whether I like it or not, right? I guess if we're forming a sign committee, that would be up to them, right? And if we form that, that means that's not us. That's not us. So it's not a personal whether I like the color, or I like the size, or like whatever. It's what it is. I'll also go back a little bit. I guess I would second the concept in the, kind of going around everybody's opinion, Barb and everybody. But sticking with the vision, with the established way it is right now, and willing to do that. But at the same time, open to further discussion and, you know, modifying, not modifications, but looking at, is there a better way to do this? I mean, I think it warrants more conversation. So I'm, I'm not saying I'm actually closed to conversation about it. I want to listen. But at the same time, I think there were, if we had 100 people that worked on this, I want to say I'm not out, I'm not smarter than them.
I don't think we had 100 people work on this.
Ninety-nine people. I'm gonna say I'm not smarter than them, okay?
There was, there was a committee.
There was at least that, yeah. So, but anyway, let's get that.
If we don't say that we're judging on what we like, what are we judging them on?
But Mardell, as a commissioner, Planning Commissioner, you know this, we, we can't make recommendations based on just solely what we like, right? Our responsibility is to stick with codes and what, what this is, right? That's our responsibility.
And to allow creativity from applicants as they come in.
Right, absolutely. Learn and evolve.
But you still judge it partially on what you like.
I'm open to learning and evolving, for sure, in this topic. But I think right now, there's nothing for me to stand on to say, yeah, change it.
That's what I was gonna say, is that right now, all I got are the guidelines, and that's the most public input that we have. And so for me to say, yes, let's change it, well, that might be coming just from my opinion. And that might not be the opinion of the whole, the city as a whole. So that's where it's like, I don't have any evidence in front of me that's, that says, or contradicts the design guidelines outside of one or two people, you know?
I did give you a report of like 20 people, 20 plus people thought.
Sure, but in, in a ratio compared to the whole city, is 20 significant enough to say, for me to say, yes, let's change it? And that's kind of where I stand is, you know, the design guidelines were created by the incorporation of several groups of people. Again, I'm not sure what cost was involved with this. I imagine there was something, because you had a, perhaps a firm create the whole packet. And I would imagine there was a greater community involvement. So that's where, this is what the community says, this is what the community wants. Even if I like eternally lit signs, the commi, the, the community right now expresses they don't. And, you know, maybe that material was 15 years old, well, then we need something that says the community doesn't like that anymore.
There was a lot of engagement that happened back then, and I think you're right, that if, if there's a desire to change, then maybe it should involve a larger city-led, community engagement effort to, to re-review it. But that's, you know, that's a big.
That's a big thing, yeah. And that's the.
There were hundreds of people in the gymnasium over here, went through a design charrette, and came up with some concepts. Those concepts were used to develop, yeah, it was a smaller committee that wrote this and put this together, but it was a result of the input from hundreds of people.
The community input.
Right.
And that's where, you know, for Barb's words, I'm washy, because I want things to be easier for businesses coming into Minneapolis.
Maple Plain.
Maple Plain.
Did you get lost?
I got lost. Still stuck in Minneapolis. No, Maple Plain, you know, I want things to start happening. I'm, and I'm speaking on behalf of, you know, the people. I imagine the people want things to happen in Maple Plain. So, you know, what do we do to kind of help make it easier for businesses, make it more accommodating? And, you know, we have tossed around the idea of compromising. Part of the, you know, sign review committee, I think that was partly our compromise, was we don't like internal illumination, but pass it through the sign review committee, and maybe they, they do, so.
I think it definitely, I mean, obviously being new to the committee or the commission here, definitely changed my, I would say, opinion on the matter, that we don't allow eternally illuminated signs. We're not saying, and these letters have come to the commission here, basically accusing us that we're denying this business their signs. There are other options out there for signage. And I just heard originally a gooseneck sign was presented, and then it changed. So what decision-making went into that? A 10-second Google search allowed me to see a gooseneck American Family sign, and it looked great. So if that's the vision that we're going for, within the community, and that's what the communities kind of spoke up for, then I think that's something that we definitely need to follow. Personally, I'm, I oppose any kind of additional sign review committee, because then that opens up a whole nother can of worms, where, right now, the way that it's established, the business leaves, then they have to come up to code with the sign. That's already in place, but what if they come in and it comes to this committee? That's a whole set of negotiation for the business, for that committee as well. Behind McGarry's, there's about three buildings that potentially, in the future, we don't know what the future holds, but those could be future businesses, and they'll have to come up to code with what McGarry's and other businesses do have. And if we do have a committee, then what if they say, well, we allowed one business to have some sort of internal illumination, we want that too? I know that those ones kind of face more so towards residential, so they would have, I think, a harder fight. But the way our rules are written right now, I think that, you know, there, we're not saying no. We're saying, here's your options. And originally, there was an approved option, and now it changed for whatever reason. You know, it, I think it's unfair of the commission to be painted in this type of a light, where, you know, you're being accused of, no, you can't have this sign, and you're not business friendly. Well, we are, it's just you changed your mind, so.
Yeah, and that's kind of what surprised me, and, you know, we are, as much as we're trying to focus away from a singular person, or a singular applicant, you know, a lot of this is spearheaded by that particular applicant. And that's what kind of surprised me, is that there were prior reviews of the building, where first there was gooseneck lighting, and then it changed to sconces. And then, you know, a month, month before her grand opening, here's a, I need a variance. And then five days before her opening, city council was meeting about it, I need a sign, I open in five days.
Sorry.
So that's where I'm kind of like, lost my train of thought. You know?
A raccoon.
It was originally, it keeps changing, it keeps changing, it keeps changing, and. Right, yep. So that was what was surprising to me, is that it was in compliance in the building review, or at least the building process, which I may not have been around for. But then now we're here, where it's, requires a variance, so.
I see the role of, if we do go with a Design Review Committee to, you know, I, I'm still against eternally lit signs. I don't see that, I don't, as it's written here, you know, this is talking about somehow allowing eternally lit signs in some way or fashion. I would be opposed to that. I, I think the Design Review Committee would have an important role in the quality and the aesthetics of the signs, but I don't, I, I wouldn't want to see it as a means to allowing eternally lit signs.
And then at that point, it's what color is yellow, like for that committee who's.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a tough committee to be on, yeah. I had to go holder.
So I, I believe that you opened the public hearing?
No, we didn't.
I thought you did.
Not officially. Should we do that?
I would like to hear it from John.
Only John wants, only John wants.
Ears only.
All right, well officially.
Is it?
Still, I do need to open up a public hearing and ask if there's anyone who wants, would like to speak. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing at, what is it, 7:28?
Barb.
Good to meet you. I didn't realize you were here. I missed what your last comment was.
He's ears only.
Ears only.
Yeah.
Barb, do you have any more to?
So Annie, I'm reading the notes.
Are you still wishy-washy?
I'm reading the notes, and I'm trying to, were you a yea or a nay? I can't find my notes right hand.
For, for the.
For coming back to the, for, let me read my.
I was one of the three.
You were one of the three. John was one of the two. No. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm still wishy-washy. I don't want to see, and I've mentioned this before, it's on record, that I don't want our town to be a neon light-up place. I'm moving out then. I, I don't want that. I want the small-time, small-time feel, feel like Excelsior. But I do want to encourage people to come to town, and I want, I have a say in the signage. That's me. I want to, you know, I want to say, okay, I would be one of those people saying, you know, that doesn't cut it for our town, so that we're not going to go with that, come back with another draft. So I guess I'm still being wishy-washy, but I, I guess no to the, to the neon. I definitely don't want that.
Eternally lit, you mean?
Yep, unless, there, there was a, a meeting, I forget which meeting it was, was brought back three or four months ago, and it was either Adam or Jared that talked about the lights that you could have, you would have control over them, right, Mark?
Yeah, dimmable, like a dimmable or a, yeah, controllable, the light intensity.
I'm definitely a no for a 24-hour thing. Uh-uh, no. I do like the goose lighting. We see that throughout the town, I do like that. I guess I kind of like to stay with the, the design team standards that we put together. Now, maybe our community has changed. We have, in my own street, we have a whole lot of turnover, so maybe those guidelines that were made 15 years ago are not the same thing that other people want to see. And that's why I mentioned being wishy-washy, saying, yes, I'd like to keep that, but maybe there is some room for improvement. Then we got the can of worms, so. I'm sorry, kids, I, I can't tell you any more than that. I just, that's how I truly feel. But absolutely no on neon lights throughout. Uh-uh, uh-uh.
Eternally lit.
When you say neon, you mean eternally, eternally lit?
That kind.
Flashing or?
Well, aren't most neon, neon lights flashing? Or they're so super bright that you can't stand?
There's exposed neon light, which is not allowed.
Okay.
You're talking like the, perhaps like a beer sign, or something like that.
We do have like, down at the liquor store, in, in Iron Exchange overhead, but then in the window is neon.
Right, like those types of signs.
In the window it says.
But Barb usually have those.
Right, yeah.
You just don't want that on top of a building.
Right, exactly, exactly.
But internally illuminated signs can be lit by neon.
Right. So. But neon, when I think of neon, neon, I think of the bare tube, you know, exposed neon. And, and I thought maybe Barb was referring to all eternally lit signs as well as neon. Neon is also prohibited as well.
Do they even put neon outside?
Yeah, they, they do. Yeah, they, they can, it's glass, I mean, they can blow it, and then they do.
I think there is something that says.
You can't have it, you can't have it in here, in our ordinance. Exposed neon is.
It's not, that's indoors, right?
No, you're not supposed to.
No. The open signs, I. The open signs, I, there is some exemption if it's small enough.
I would make a motion, I, just getting started on understanding what that could be, to maintain the vision of the city, and not, not to make those changes, but, with that being said, to continue the discussion, uh, to have our, to be open to the discussion and ideas and looking at, at those things, which is different than granting variances or whatever. I'm saying stay with the design standards and, but be open to further discussion on this, on this, on the subject. Somebody may be articulate that better than I did.
Is there a second?
I second.
Since the truly lit signs are the, you know, the issue at hand for the council, should we amend your, your motion to be explicit about that?
Yes. I'm going to take a run at that.
Well, I'll let you, I'll let you rephrase it if you'd like. But it's basically, I think, recommending, you know, change to the sign, the current city sign ordinance, which incorporates the design review, which incorporates the, uh, design guidelines prohibiting internally lit signs in mixed-use areas.
Agreed.
So basically, we're not accomplishing...
But allowing for the opportunity to, for further discussion and consideration of...
Alternatives.
Sign committees, or whatever that hybrid is, to help us through, because this reoccurs, right? So some process that can help us through this in the future, so it doesn't...
Are you recommending the formation of the committee?
I think recommending the discussion form committee.
Can we go back? I, we just want to make sure we get the motions.
Mm-hmm.
Good, so the original motion, I think we've got that, Mike and Nick, you seconded it, correct, and then Stefan, you recommended, uh, an amendment to that motion, uh, saying no change in the code incorporating, or denying internally lit, we, we would need a second on that motion to amend, and then we would need the adoption of the actual motion.
A vote?
Yeah.
Yep.
Is there a second to the amendment that I proposed?
I would second that.
I second it.
Two seconds? Maybe we'll let Barb second that since you...
Okay, and then, and then we just need a vote.
Any other discussion before we vote?
So what are we really voting on?
No change.
No change.
Basically, no change.
What you will continue to discuss.
So we're accomplishing nothing.
I'd say we accomplished a good discussion.
True.
And came to a conclusion.
I think part of the accomplishment, more doubt, is the integrity of sticking with what the design concept is, and what that work was done, and the integrity of that decision, which is the harder decision to make.
Let's have a vote then, now, in favor of that amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
If you have opposes. Um, do we want to make any other recommendations pertaining specifically to a design committee? Or leave it just as open to discussion? I'm not sure how, you know, open to discussion looks.
I think, I think it's an, I think it's a topic, I think it's an issue that warrants conversation, or a better understanding, breakdown of what's possible, what is ridiculous, and I, and I don't have all those, I don't, I don't know if we, you know, can we make a list of the ten items right now? No idea.
Would it be, would it be helpful if we had something more solid to actually sort of critique, so if the, um, if, if council, and it sounds like council's leaning towards some sort of internally lit, whether they're creating it or they're getting a recommendation from you guys, um, so it, you know, if we're leaning towards none, but we know that there will be some, should we set up some fairly strict guidelines for you to kind of assess and, and sort of envision somehow?
With, with the criteria?
Say yea or nay, so that you can, you know, so that there's some way in, like, how, how can we assist in this process?
Not sure, I assume if the council's going to hold to amend that change, they're, we're done with the conversation.
Well, except for that they're going to tell us, so, so we would just, we would go back to them with your recommendation, they would say, okay, we want to move forward, staff, go write something, and then maybe it's staff, go write something, take it to, back to the planning commission, and then bring it back to the city council, or do you want us to write it for you, bring it back to you, do you know what I mean? Like, there's, there's...
I don't know, seems like many circles there.
Does.
I, I mean, it just seems like we're not getting anywhere, we're just passing it back and forth between all involved.
Just so I understand better too, Barb, is, what are, what is the council, is it, they voting just to have internally lit blanket through the city? Here we go.
No, I mean, it would be based on whatever code that we, we provide, I mean, it's just like any other ordinance, so there's, and, you know, for this particular, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of standards that we could look at, right?
Right, yeah, part of it is, I think, that we've done a good job here as a planning commission, and you guys have done some good work here, I guess it's up to the council.
Or do we want to have a say in the matter? I mean, do we want to have a, sort of, a seat at the table, as you're saying?
Well, from what I read here, and I could be terribly wrong, um, it sounds like the city council is wanting to do the internal lighting, is that what you think, Connie?
Yes, ma'am.
How many of the people, and maybe this is not a fair question, and I have to say I'm sorry right away, how many of the council members were around when the design team was working? I mean, how many people actually of the city council members lived in our town at the time of the design team meeting? Does that seem like a fair question?
That lived in, that lived in Maple Plain?
Uh-huh, fifteen, twenty years ago when we did that.
But not necessarily involved in the meeting that took place.
Right.
Um, yeah, so, the mayor, myself, Caitlin, Mike, no? How about you, John?
Mike would have been here, Mike would have been here. He and his wife were part of that, I remember them showing up for that.
Okay. John, did you live here back fifteen years ago? So that's four out of five.
Okay.
The only one that we're not sure of would be Caitlin.
Yeah, and I don't know that one.
I don't know, okay.
So even how many of you guys, we know?
You know, I...
Even how many? I added up my ears, I'm not sure I want to tell you.
You don't have to.
I don't want to tell you mine either, but I will tell you I'm on the second time around on this.
Well, does the planning commission want to be at the table if, if regardless of, despite our recommendation, if they're going, at the anyway, do you want to be at the table or not?
Are you talking anybody, a couple members, or what, what are you...
You're not talking about the committee, you're talking about further discussion, to identify what it was we're doing. Is that what you're saying?
It's the, the question is, it's going to go back to council, council's going to say draft an ordinance, the ordinance then is going to, I mean, obviously, the planning commission, the council would like to have planning commission input. We've come three ti- three times now, and the, the direction has been no change, so the question is, then, if it's no change, but the council says, we're going to make a change, do you want...
A little input on that, or just let them do what they want?
Do you want to talk about it? I mean, we did bring you draft ordinances, right?
Right.
I mean, so we went out, we looked at a bunch of ordinances, we said, here's some standards that we think would accommodate, those, those might not be the only standards, but, um, planning commission's been pretty clear, they don't think we can write the standard that, that, you know, supports the design, design guidelines, so, do you, do you want any part in what the council does with that ordinance? Ultimately, you're going to enforce that ordinance, whatever that is, if it was, you know, if it's a variance or something like that, you'd have to have that language, but, and, and we don't know, I don't know what the council's direction is, I mean, we've done this twice now, so, we, we came to you two times, we said, okay, took a recommendation back, council said, ask them again, we asked you again, I think there's thoughtful discussion, it's no.
And we appreciate all the work you're putting through, and I, and I, and I know you got to go back, do it again, and we apologize for that. I, I think, um, speaking for myself, and I think everybody, I, I think there's an integrity with the vision that's important. We're attracting some pretty neat stuff into Maple Plain, and that didn't happen by accident, it happened with hard work, but it also happened with design guidelines, and, you know, American fa- I love American fa- I'm insured through American Family, not in town here, but with Jeff Mahew Agency, but I have nothing wrong with, I love American Family, my son used to it, no issues there at all, right? Um, but I, somehow you got to hang your hat on, on, on this a little bit, and, um, you know, I'm not smarter than a hundred people that did the work, that sacrificed the time to make it happen, and personally, a feeling, I believe in the vision. I believe a vision has to, to season itself, I think it ha- it takes time. Fifteen years is a drop in the bucket, fifteen years ago, if, boom.
You had your recession in there.
Boom, done, done, and then, so, just to sort of, it feels arbitrary, it feels...
Reactionary?
Like that, reactionary, it feels, uh, that, and it, it, sort of, change in ordinance based on, I, I don't, I don't, when the bigger picture is so much broader, and so much more of a reward, so much more of a reward, tangible, you can see it, it's there. Changing the ordinance, we have no idea where that's going to go, where it stops or, or start, done. I think we stick with the only thing we know, and that's the hard work folks did to put this thing together, and the integrity of doing that, integrity for what they developed, not integrity from ethics, from, from, from what the, the work that they did. And I, you know, I, a lot of communities, and a part of a lot of cities, and, you know, it's, one thing as a developer that you really appreciate is a city that you know where you stand, you know? Yeah, things are going to modify a little bit here and there, but they're going to modify on fact, and, and they're going to, you know, a, a deal, right? It's good for the city, it's good for that, boy, I don't understand where it's good for the city here. I don't understand where it's good for the city. Am I representing the city and the people who live in this city with a vote, like, you know? It's me taking the easy way out, saying, yeah, switch it up, willy-nilly, let's go, whatever, you know, the rubber stamp's on the counter, you got an idea, come in, and you're golden. I think that the issues, the codes, the, the book, all that stuff's there for a reason. As far as the vision goes, I think we have to give it some time, and fifteen years isn't, that's, that's, I know it was in a couple of the letters, but that's sort of an uninformed, it, it, you know, just, you know, fifteen years is nothing. Jeez, it takes five years to get a project up and running before it goes in the ground, four years, so.
Thank you for that.
I feel better.
You needed that.
I needed that, so anyway.
Yeah, and I almost think adding a sign review committee creates more red tape, which makes it harder for businesses to get their signs approved, because they have to go through this sign review. I know I expressed it was efficient, it was less costly, which is good for a business, but then at the same time, on the back end of it, well, then they have to sit through this meeting, and then they might have to sit, it almost adds another element to getting their sign approved, so that's where, you know, obviously, if, if the ordinance gets amended, we as planning commissioners are supposed to enforce, or at least review the ordinance and compare it against the applicant and their application, so, leave it at that. And that's almost, in my mind, the easiest thing to do, especially if council's going to go ahead and say, we're going to approve a, an amendment, and here's what we're going to add to it, you know, well then, I'm going to do my best to follow what the ordinance says, and...
Mark, I have a, another question. Was the, the, you know, reading the notes here and, and that, was the committee supposed to be a long-term thing, or just a very short-term thing to help?
The idea in the committee is to bypass the variance process through another process, um, it's not to get rid of the variance process, because an applicant would always have the option if the committee said no, right? Because if the commit, if the committee became, let's say it became rogue and, you know, argued about yellows or something, the applicant could always go to the planning commission council through that process. The reason we've done these committees is really, it's really, uh, an aesthetic review committee, but it, it's kind of like a, um, it's kind of, it's, I call it like a vetting committee. It just makes sure that what's being proposed is consistent with what the vision is, and that group that you select has to be people that, you know, understand the vision, but it's, it's meant to really be a quicker, faster kind of vet. Now, in this case, what we were talking about with the committee initially was not all signs, we were saying, if a person wanted to illuminate, internally illuminate a sign, they could go in front of the committee first as a mechanism to kind of bypass the variance process, and if the sign review committee agreed and approved, it would be done. The sign revi- review committee denied, then they could spend the money and time and effort to go through the more formal variance process. So it's, um, it was just one tool, right? It's not the, it's not the only tool, and there are issues with it, it can become a, um, you know, a group that, you know, has a lot of power or control. But to that point, there is a statutory public process that you can always ask as a business owner to go through, and that's a, that, you know, then that does go to planning, and council ultimately is the final say on that.
Okay.
But, um, I mean, it, it was, it was one way if you wanted to, and clearly we don't, this group doesn't, to, to think about internal, but it, it's not the only way I was looking for alternatives, right? To, how, how do you get something that maybe works, that's kind of a, a blended version, right? But...
And I, and I appreciate you, all the work you've put into that, I mean, oh my gosh, better you than I, right, or us? So that was, great work, um, I, you know, whatever we adopt, it's got to be something that is going to work, not a stopgap.
Right.
Like, then it's that, well, you know, what, six months into it, it's like, well, that didn't exactly work, so let's try something new and throw some more mud at the wall. I think that's part of my hesitancy to sort of come in today and just define what it is. I don't know what it is, and I think that by committee, by, um, conversation, and by further com- we got two and a half hours into this, or whatever we've got into this. We're working hard, third time around on this deal, we're working our rear ends off to try to figure this out, in a way, we keep coming back. We're working hard the third time around on this deal. We're working our rear ends off to try to figure this out in a way. We keep coming back. But whatever it is that we adopt, it's gotta be something that's worked, that works, and I'm not sure we know what that is.
Mm-hmm.
To be able to hand the list to the committee and say, all right, there's a crack. I don't know what that is.
I still like the idea of a design review committee, but just not as a vehicle for allowing internally, internally lit signs. I think having a good quality aesthetic for the town is important, and this, and the committee could do that. I know there's be a lot of, it could be a can of worms. But, um, I think it could help ease some of the red tape, if you will, of, of, uh, of going through the process, but, um.
I agree.
All right, well, enough discussion? Tonight or? You'll be bringing back?
I think we've done it.
If there is, if there is a, a change in the ordinance, that'll be coming back to us for a review. Presume then? Or no?
That was the question, but I, I don't, I mean, if the, if the planning commission wants to see the proposed change, we can bring it back. We don't have to. But council can, council can certainly.
How do we feel about that?
I think if there's a proposed change or there is a change, I think we should review.
Is that possible?
No.
Okay.
For sure.
Um, I think, do we need to then make a vote where we're at on our motion to remain as we are?
We did already.
Yeah, we already did the vote, yeah.
So we got that, so we're done?
Yeah.
You wouldn't, yes.
I did?
You did. All right. Well, then, uh, last, or second to last on the agenda, any other reports or other business?
You've Santa is Saturday.
Yes.
Bring out your, uh, non-perishable food items.
Yep, and he will be in Veterans Park. I'm not sure of the time.
Four forty-five.
In Veterans?
Did you say Food Santa? Food at Santa?
Santa Claus is coming down my street at six forty.
Santa Claus is coming early in this area.
Well, it's right across from me, so.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, they, you gotta tour some of the airports too, so.
And the library.
Okay.
No, not the library. The museum, historical museum will be offering cookies and cider again.
Thirty-three years, I think I've missed it twice.
You Santa or the cookies and cider?
Santa, excuse me. Well, not only Santa, but it's the, uh, what's really neat about it is, uh, West, uh, the squad out there getting the safe, you know?
All the reservists are the ones that collect food.
So that's pretty cool.
I have one more question, Carissa. It is December now, okay? So in January, we have a discussion on who's gonna be the new chair? Since somebody doesn't wanna do it, or did you change your mind?
He does it.
I, I would still, uh, prefer not to be chair, but I'm open to, you know, the, whatever nominations happen.
Okay, and that happens in January, right?
Yes, yes, it will.
So we will have a meeting in January. And can I go on record for saying I'm so glad to be back on our monthly planning commission meetings for a while? It was a hit and miss, a hit and miss, and maybe missed times two, times before it happened. So I'm very glad of the, what you guys have done in the office here to make it on a monthly meeting basis.
That's why the council keeps sending you back things to.
Well, you know, that's gonna happen, but I'm just.
I wouldn't have a meeting for no, for no reason. You wanna give me, uh, topics that you wanna hold a meeting for?
Are there any other ordinances that we wanna tackle, revisions to?
Uh, I'll get back to you on that.
Thoughts on the, on that subject?
For different ordinances?
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was only one question I brought up in our council meeting is people leaving junk at the end of their driveways. How long can, does it stay out there?
Mm-hmm.
Before they, that's a public nuisance thing.
That's a, yeah, in the, in the nuisance ordinance, I'm not sure exactly what it reads, but it sounds like an enforcement issue.
Yeah. And not only for residents, but for businesses. The one over by the old schoolhouse that throws junk willy-nilly all over. And then says, don't deposit your trash here. Why do they call that a oxymoron?
I think we did look at the nuisance ordinance, uh, several years ago, didn't we?
We strengthened the nuisance ordinance a couple of years ago, yeah. Enforcement is the challenge that we're facing everywhere right now.
Yeah. That's a, that's a tough thing to do, but appreciate, I'd like to go on record too, thanking staff for not only enforcement issues, but, uh, the hard work you put into this sign ordinance issue as well, too. It's appreciated. Kinda stuck in the, you'd be stuck in the middle sometimes, so appreciate your, your work and, uh, and all that you've gone through. Any other reports?
Okay, so I'll make a motion and join this wonderful meeting.
I'll second.
All right, I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So done.